I'm calling the meeting order. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli, companion?
Here.
Graziano?
Here.
Councilmember Vittori will not be with us this evening. Councilmember Robel?
Here.
Jim Oliver?
Here.
Mayor Millen?
Yes, here. Do I have a packet of sunshine? I can pull it up online if I have.
No, we have the next one.
Sunshine.
Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, notice that this meeting was published in the Thursday July 7th editions of the Belleville Times and Star Ledger. The copy of annual meeting notice has been posted on the Belleville Town Hall vol. And copies are in file in the municipal purpose books.
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, everybody, I'd like to welcome you to our first meeting in October. First meetings of the month are always our combined conference regular meeting. With that being said, council members, members of the administration have the ability to put any topics they want on for discussion. And I just want to advise the audience that's here, as you already know by now, that you can listen to us deliberate. It's a little unique because you're watching us have conversation. There is no public participation portion at this part of the meeting. But if you do hear something that interests you, you more than willing can speak about it during public commenting later on. So that being said, I have a couple of different topics. I'm gonna go pretty quick. My first type of topic on is the meter discussion. So we have seen, I don't want to say new meters on Washington Avenue, I want to say meter heads on Washington Avenue. So I'd like to get an update from the manager on that project and then just to see what the future holds. Are we gonna get the full meter? Are we gonna get the app eventually? Or I'm kinda a little discouraged because I know we made a considerable investment. And it just seems like every time we invest in technology into our hardware, we just do it to do it and we don't get the full effect of it. We saw that, I think, with GovPilot. And I think we see it now where we don't have the app, we don't have the stands, we don't have some of the other things. I'm just hoping that's all coming.
So the app is in place minus the actual stickers that go on meters?
Nobody knows to download the app.
That is correct. So but they have been ordered, they were ordered day one. Problem is, it's just a little bit of a backlog.
So it's a sticker on the head itself?
Plus signs.
Is it gonna be on the signs?
Plus signs.
Plus signs. Okay.
We also ordered some signs too.
Perfect. So that takes care of that issue.
Now, I've seen meters with no heads on them, and I've reported them to the chief.
Yeah, they're being repaired, Mayor. The problem is, the old housing's matching with the new heads. We are ordering new housings also.
We were initially under the impression that the existing pole and the existing housing would just work correctly.
It does.
And it does, it does work for some.
Mostly.
But for, you could pull it off without the correct housing.
When they were installing them, I saw them installing them, and you could easily get a key or screwdriver in there. And even though there's no money necessarily, I could perceive people trying to steal and thinking that there is no.
This is all gonna be.
I don't know if the decision was right. I don't know if the decision was to save a little money, because again, if you're gonna make the investment, make the investment correctly. So we are now replacing the houses.
Yeah, I believe what helped us all was the street scape. We thought that was coming sooner rather than later. And we just figured, let's just start slow, so that they're gonna rip the sidewalks up anyway.
So the bottom of the meter, we're gonna get next, that's it?
We're getting new housings, Mayor. It matches better with, it fits like a glove. Like, you have to say, you get a 2022 head, putting it on 1940 housing, it's not gonna be exact, so.
Does a pole stay, is that the existing?
The pole, we're gonna use, we're gonna get new poles when they're done with the street scape. There's no sense buying new poles, we're gonna rip them out of the concrete.
Okay. But the street scape does not include sidewalks?
In some spots, maybe.
Some spots maybe, so we created the Zoom meeting last week.
Yeah, but right out front, it is gonna include it, Mayor.
Yeah, some spots.
So some spots are gonna be wired.
Maybe 25% of them are gonna be wired.
Yeah.
And there's gonna be big equipment.
Why is the rain guarded in that?
Yeah, the rain.
But it doesn't matter, we're gonna worry about housing, we can take them off before they do any construction.
Okay, anybody else on this topic?
No, I'm good with that.
Next item is, again, multiple conversation with the chief about this, crosswalks and yellow painted curves.
I did, I did wanna jump on the topic of the meters.
Sure.
So I'm just, just questioning, so when they go red, that means they're empty and car spray should be taken?
Expired. If they're in violation, yeah.
Okay.
Does Blink red?
Okay, so does that, does it, does it notify us when they go red?
Yes, they are supposed to notify.
So is that set up?
I believe so. I believe it is.
Okay.
I'm not 100% sure, I don't wanna say, but I know we're gonna have the capability of doing it.
Okay, so once we start getting that red light?
Yes.
And app working?
Yes.
We'll be able to go out and take it?
Yes.
Not, okay, good.
Would that be a police officer or would that be a ticket meter person?
We have a meter person, but.
They're nine to five, they're the same hours as the parking hours for the most part?
Well, the most part, not exactly.
Yeah, okay.
Cool.
So just so I know, a police officer driving down Washington Avenue?
They can, they should.
They can, but they don't, it's not, they're gonna patrol rather than.
We pay someone's salary to do that.
Right, okay, that's fine.
They can, if we gotta complain, they're not there, they do it.
Right.
Just like, just like street cleaning.
Yep. All right, across walking yellow painted curves, there's a specific area close in the fourth ward, houses real close together, driven on numerous occasions there with the chief actually, whether that's Floyd, Malone, all those blocks right there, there seem to constantly be cars on top of the corner. I've seen cars parked diagonal on the round part of the corner. And, you know, I know from a police perspective, the police know the law, the law is X amount of feet from the corner, so they feel that people should know that. But then I've driven with the chief, and I've showed him where we have Belgium block that are painted yellow, and the people do kinda.
There were less violations.
They kinda do, I think they just need to see the yellow of it. And they think that if it's not yellow, they can kinda sneak and put it there and they're not getting tickets, so. But I do think that we really need to aggressively paint curves, we used to do it with the summer. I'm told through a birdie, I have a little birdie as well, you know, in this building.
You sure you have one of ours?
I have a couple of birdies. I'm told that we may have a machine now that paints?
Just got it, that's what I'm saying, it's all we started to let.
But things are in motion. So a machine that paints, that's gonna be good with the curves and crosswalks. And we also do crosswalks, we have to bring in a line company for that.
Crosswalks, I like bringing the company in, but.
Can our machine?
Yeah, depends who operates the machine.
Who's operating the machine?
Exactly.
Well, I like the fact we used to paint the weeds, but on the curves.
I don't wanna say, it's not politically correct right now, so I won't. But again, it depends who's operating that machine.
Okay, now, again, not to, not to, but we're gonna actually, because we bought equipment before, we've stored it somewhere. We're gonna learn how to use it, we're gonna train somebody.
I actually witnessed the instructional session myself. I witnessed the people.
So you can paint the curves?
No, I said I witnessed the, I witnessed the tape with the instructional course.
All right, so we can be rest assured that we're gonna paint the whole town yellow and white. Yellow curves, white crosswalks.
We are beginning with a certain area that requires immediate attention.
Deputy Mayor again.
Conversation. So as far as the yellow curves, once they're painted, they're gonna be taken if people are on them.
Absolutely.
Okay, the crosswalks, I was, one of my topics, I wanna talk about, I jump on your coattails, crosswalks for safety around schools. I see it around in other schools, I'm not saying to garden, but if we put crosswalks on around the school areas, every school, and I see they have the solar stop signs that are really just around the areas, have we thought about something like that? To where, especially around the school, right, especially around the school where you have them and the kids are always crossing, and, and you may not, you know, you may not have a guard there, which is fine, or you may, fine.
Oh, we have a guard of every school.
Right, but I'm saying, crosswalks around the school, like the cross intersections, so if you go up, take, say, Avenue, but take number seven school, you have on all the surrounding around there, right, you have Pressey Avenue, you have Division, you have Doralman, there. Go, go Graylock, Norton, Bellmore, Boom, Adelaide, right, and then, like, all of those is my point, and especially around like number four school and number three school, where you have the crosswalks. I'm just saying, crosswalk should be four ways, not just two ways around schools, if I said that right.
Uh, no.
Yeah, but you can't cross, you can't cross Division.
No, that is, that is wrong.
So we can't do that?
No.
No, you know, no, 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 that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
You have to have a specified corner for that, and they are already earmarked.
Okay.
Yeah, you can't, you can't cross, I know it's a vast same.
Yeah, a lot of people like, again, they think there's one on Doralman by DeWitt, and there's not, and try tied in a way with it, but the parents and the kids just make their own, they don't listen to the guard, but that doesn't mean it's gonna be there because they're doing it. Like, it doesn't belong there, it's too close to the next nearest one, and it creates another hazard. So you can't just nilly-willy put crosswalks.
Okay.
All right, anybody else? No? Last topic for me is, I know we've had some conversations about the ATVs and dirt bikes crossing over, a lot of times they do cross over from North Broadway into Belleville, but we also have our share of dirt bikes and ATVs. I've been noticing, I know I sent you, chief, some articles about Patterson's mayor, they've cracked down heavily on that. And just so the public knows, even though we can't go back and forth in conversation, this is not, unfortunately, it's not really a law enforcement issue. Sadly, our police officers in a patrol car cannot attempt to stop a dirt bike or an ATV because they're not a licensed motor vehicle with a plate and all that stuff. So it's not a motor vehicle infraction, therefore, in the current modern world, especially New Jersey that we live in, where our police are regularly handcuffed, they're powerless to do anything. So much so, that if, if, if they see somebody on a dirt bike or a quad that's terrorizing traffic, by the way, the town attorney witnessed it, the town manager witnessed it, not 15 minutes ago on Washington Avenue, we had multiple ATVs zipping around traffic. If our police officers hit the lights and that ATV takes off and crashes, the police officer in the department can be held liable.
Township.
And the township. That's the state that we live in, literally the state that we live in, unfortunately. So we are kinda handcuffed, but there are mayors that are doing something about it. Patterson mayor, they are, they have the ability to confiscate, I'm assuming that's when they're not in motion. I don't know how they're doing that.
They do that now.
I will call Andre and ask him how they're doing that, but he's been in two articles already about how many vehicles they've confiscated. And I think once the message gets out that we don't tolerate it, I think it'll subside here in Belleville. Did I get any of that wrong, chief?
Pardon?
Did I get any of that wrong?
Well, other than saying, you can't attempt to stop, you can, but if it initiates a pursuit, then you're in trouble.
Right, so if they just don't stop, you can't really do much about it.
You have to stop, yeah, right. For motor vehicle. I could get into the whole chase policy, but there's an enumerated crime that was committed on the ATV, then you could.
Right. But if you're just joyriding with no helmet?
Shot clerk in the bank, and on the way out sexually assaulted someone, and hopped on their ATV?
Right.
And shot at the cops on the way, then you could.
We have to do calculus and trigonometry, as you know, we could, kind of like that. So I'm gonna do that, I'm gonna ask Mayor Andre how they're handling that, and I'll just forward you some information, or we could do an ordinance, or would that be an ordinance, or you guys already have police powers to, what would you need from us?
Again, for motor vehicle offenses, we don't need anything, but if you wanna enhance it or amend a law with an ordinance, I mean.
I know Camden did something, I know a lot of the inner cities.
We have shirts for symbolic, Mayor, I mean, you know, again, it doesn't, the town ordinance is not gonna supersede the AG guidelines on pursuits.
These, these towns are doing it somehow, but we'll, we'll find out how.
There's a, I heard, chief, that towns were also banning gas stations from filling up ATVs.
Yeah, that's fine, that's.
Is it, yeah. I mean, look, if you come in the trailer in the back of your car, fine, fill it up, but if you drive into a gas station?
The $500 fund.
It's $500 for the, for the gas station, we gotta do it, just like the e-cigarettes, just like.
I don't think they're supposed to do that anyway, I don't think they're supposed to be doing that.
Well, well, you could do an ordinance and another file.
Yeah.
And then we could.
It's a law, how to do it, okay.
I think they should.
We have some things that's tracked down. Our next item is Deputy Mayor Graziano, he's got various items for discussion, I see.
Yeah, so I'm gonna start off with Anthony, he's pretty much, or to you. So the high school security, the grounds, are we making any headway with that?
Yeah, so we, you know, we're trying to do it the best that we can with a few bodies. We're also meeting with Dr. Tonko this week, and that's one of the items that we're going to review.
Okay, this has been an ongoing problem, water, the water, water update of Fairway with the previous rains, I know we had discussion about this, about the pumps and stuff, and anything to alleviate, have we put any efforts into looking at that again, and or putting in a budget?
So the last time we spoke about it somewhat holistically in general, we were going to hire a engineering company to do a review. I believe that's the way I remember the last time. We even accepted bids, we did accept bids. But to the best of my knowledge, we never awarded, passed that assignment to any engineers that submitted that. So Kelly, perhaps me, you could take a look at who submitted, and we'll pass that out to the council, and maybe we'll even have something ready for the next meeting. Because again, we don't wanna go out and spend X, I don't know what X was, but it was a couple hundred thousand, maybe, or a hundred thousand on a pump, without knowing for sure that that pump was going to correct the problem.
Tractor trailers, dump trucks, would all our new streets get paved, looking nice? And I seen tractor trailers, Graylock Parkway, and other locations, and they're actually hitting the trees. I believe we have an ordinance in place right now, wait and stuff like that? And if we do, or?
If it's a, if it's a, if it's a street, truck, dump truck street, there's.
So, yeah, like, like.
Some streets have them, constantly.
Yeah, so how would we, like, if I seen that happen?
Bayard, 20 years ago, we dealt with Bayard Street with that.
Yeah, I mean, some have them, some.
Okay, so is it, is it up to us to call, and like, if you see something, call, and how does that work?
We, we really should check with our township engineer, I mean, some traffic study, because some trucks have, unfortunately, no alternative, but they go down a certain street, unfortunately. They have a delivery on that street, maybe, perhaps.
You know, and I know, we're trying to beautify it now.
We're dealt with this on Belmont Avenue, we've been dealing with this for years on Belmont, like, sometimes that's the only way they can go, to deliver to the super fresh. It's on Belmont Avenue, but you know, it's, you can't make it impossible, ordinance, and make it impossible for the truck to get there.
Yeah, just thinking, not because if it, if they are gonna.
Oh, it's fine, you pave it, it helps save the.
And if they, and not only that, they hit the trees, if the trees are not trimmed, then it affects something else, so.
Yeah.
I'm just.
Well, make a list, and let the engineer take a look at it.
Okay, thank you.
That's what I would suggest, yeah.
The signs, as we know, and Anthony has been working on it with DPW, the signs on Graylock Parkway that have been getting, we put a sign up, street signs, get knocked down, and we know that, we're working on that. But with the past garage sale that we had, right, I still see, it's Tuesday, and I still see signs up that people put up in a roll outer. Is there, is that anybody, particular job that would actually make sure those signs are off? So we had, we had the garage sale on Saturday and Sunday.
Again, we were off on Monday, which today is the first.
Okay.
Again, Bobby's not here, but we really do put a concentrated effort, especially the junk cars, cars for sale, we go up, they go up with a very high ladder, we go up with a buggy truck to get them down. So with the exception of Monday as being a holiday.
And, I forgot about that, because I work from home.
It's, gotta come to work for talent. But it's a, it's an assignment that we normally don't even have to ask them to do, they're pretty good at it now.
And two more. I know we have a program, it's, I believe, we always talk about it, and that's the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, right? And we have a lot of money there? And I know, I don't know the right numbers of who applied and how many applied to this date, but I know, I don't think it's being used, you know what I mean? So is there any way that we could think out of the box, and I know there's regulations around this, can you reach out to whomever, I guess it's CNA, I don't know who put it together?
CME's or our administrators.
Right, so is your, can we look at something like this to see?
I, I've asked this question, the answer's been no, but maybe we have to ask differently, or it could only be used for, to repair houses.
Is that the question?
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
And I asked, can we use it for facades, can we use it for, we'll ask it again a different way, maybe we'll get a different answer.
Yeah, because, I mean, it's, it's money is there, it's not taxpayer's money, it's there, it can help everybody, so we can look at that.
Could we get a report and see where it's actually? We can do get some, tell them. Yeah, I haven't gotten it in my mind, though. I'll make sure we get one. Right, or something.
And then the last thing. I see a lot, and I know we were catching up, chief, and this had to do with the handicap signs? Handicaps, you know, handicap signs? Last month, last meeting, we had a lot because we didn't do them the past.
Yes.
Right? And now I see on this month, there's a lot more, but then I also hear when people come in, they complain about, you know, we have no parking on the streets and stuff like that. Is there anything that we can put in place, if you didn't already, or don't, or you have, I don't know, asking, to where we can check up on these yearly and see if they're valid, not valid?
They do.
Oh, you do, okay.
Yes. I thought the, again, I apologize, I thought the complaint you were talking about is that there was so much stuff at one time, might not.
No, because I drive around.
That was my complaint.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, then, that's been addressed.
Okay, so I can tell you, I can drive around and you see people in drag, and I know there's, except, I know there's rules and there's, you see driveways.
Supposed to be, there was ever the closest from point A to point B.
And I, and I know over the years, it, there's a gray area, I believe, I'll call it that way, but you have people that have.
Call it a gray area.
Right, and if there's.
Call it a political gray area.
Exactly, exactly, and if there, and if there's rules, and if there's rules and guidelines around it, maybe on the review, we enforce them regardless. That's my personal opinion.
Enforce them, why not, issuing them?
Yeah, and or taking them if they don't really.
Oh, no, we take, we take them away when there's someone.
Which will free up parking space, when you start counting them up and looking throughout the town, there's a lot.
If I may, 'cause my opinion is too many handicap parks.
Right, thank you, that's all.
Thank you. I don't want to.
Okay, so we're gonna move right on to the report of the manager.
Good evening, everyone. So I'm sure you either read it or heard, saw on the news, there was a 72-inch.
Main break.
What a main break, which could have been a very detrimental impact on our community. We were extremely lucky because both Nutley, Dunfield, and Montclair. Air.
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 Yes, but is it hot? Let there.
Yeah.
All experienced water, advisories, low water pressure, water discoloration, all the above. We had some, in our water department and our engineering department, we're working very close with Nutley, Montclair, Dunfield, complete communication. We had to divert some of the water lines. Hospital during this whole four or five days maintained proper water pressure, so that was important. The reason why I say that, not only to say that we were very lucky, that we only experienced some low water pressure in, I mean, around the neighborhoods, but because we do have a schedule now for the hydro flushing, and it's important to residents understand that this is not only a requirement from the DPP, but by us, flushing the hydrants, it improves the quality of the water, and it certainly helps with water breaks and things of that nature, because it maintains the correct water pressure. So we have our schedule, which we post on our website, that's between today and Thursday, and we posted those streets. So some people do, may experience, like tonight, may experience low water pressure, or wake up tomorrow morning, decent brown water, and just, you know, again, run the water for five minutes and it should be fine. Public works been extremely busy, but we still have about a month left on leave pickup, which is a, you know, a primary responsibility at this time of the year. And also, you know, we're gonna maintain the street sweeper being up there as long as we can. We never pick an exact date, because it's weather dictated. So if we get a mild fall in winter, we'll have the sweeper up there until the temperatures drop to all freezing. And we continue with our maintenance schedule for cleaning out the catch bases, that helps when we get the heavy rains.
Through the chair, just a real quick question, Mike, to the manager. With all this banging and everything that PSENG is doing over the course of the last couple of years, I mean, we've been experiencing, to me, an ordinance on these breaks, I mean, are they responsible at any point in time or not?
I don't wanna speak for PSENG, I would, I would assume they're not gonna take responsibility for any brake crack or repair, but we have been working closely with them, because as you know, we're about to start our 17th street repaving program, and we wanna coordinate with them. They really, with the exception of Little Street, they really don't have much for plan for the fall. Unexpected, you know, makes emergencies different, but, so we're trying to coordinate that. I think that's about it, certainly it's available for any questions.
Anybody else for the manager?
Just one other quick question. Kelly, I know you said we were able to get that bill was published, so the bill was got published, right?
It's on the civic vote, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else at manager? So, next item, the agenda is the report of the mayor. So we have the, as always, I like to just kinda touch base with some past events, some upcoming events, some news. Before I do so, I know that Deputy Mayor, for the last couple of years, has always wanted us to wear pink in October, so we're gonna make the announcement, we're gonna do that next, next meeting? Everybody, council?
Yes, got it.
Everybody's good? Pink, administration, manager, deb? Yeah, okay, so we're gonna wear pink next, two weeks from today. So past events, so this past Saturday and Sunday, we had our townwide garage sales, we probably had north of 175 people participate, the overwhelming majority of people did opt back in for the second week. I took the opportunity, I know the police department made their rounds, I know the fire department made their rounds, stopping in some different garage sales, and it just seemed like it was a great event. It seemed perfect, even though it wasn't the original date, but it did seem perfect, coincided with the food truck festival that was at the new venue. I have to say, I did love the prior venues, I thought it was all enclosed in and tucked in nicely. I have to say that I did enjoy the new venue, being at the high school, I thought it worked out well. I think that a lot more people showed up, we probably had maybe 2,000 people in and out over the course of eight hours. Weather was a little chilly, but it worked out well. While the sun was out, it was fine, it was even tolerable when the sun went down, even though it was a little bit on the chilly side. But again, we're really looking forward to next year, that's gonna be an annual thing, it's usually the second Saturday, it's been Friday in the past, but it's, usually around the first week or so in October, so we're looking forward to doing that again. And the next day, it was a busy weekend in Belville. Very next day, we had an early morning for some of us. We were here at nine o'clock in the morning at Town Hall for the Italian fly grazing, and then some of us participated in the Columbus Day Parade with our friends and colleagues over on the other side of the border in Nutley. Always great to see them. I have to say, and this is probably my fifth year, I think, and deputy mayor, and Vinnie, correct me, but I do think that this was the highest level of participation of families sitting outside on the Doralum Street, the Franklin Avenue. Usually we get, we don't get much turnout, but we had people strewn about everywhere, team. We handed out some candy, it was good. So upcoming events, this coming Thursday, chief Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday? Safe Talk, October 13th, what day is that?
Wednesday.
Wednesday. This coming Wednesday, tomorrow.
Thursday, sorry. Sorry.
Thursday. So Thursday, we have the Police Department Community Safety Talk. It's 11 o'clock at Feustman Church. I'm sending Karen to crash that. Because we've been unable, how you contacted anybody in Feustman Church, we don't know, because we have emailed, we have called, we've sent carrier pigeons. They do not return calls, they do not return emails. We have to get ahold of them to ask them a question, and I'm sending Karen to crash on Thursday. I'm assuming that then, I'm assuming the 14th is then gonna be Friday. We have our fire department getting involved, they're doing the fire safety event. That's always a great event for kids. They get to work with fire hoses, they get to see the jaws of life, they get to see all the toys that the fire department has. That's gonna be Friday evening from 6 to 8. October 22nd is our next big township event, that is our Halloween spectacular. It's gonna be at Belville High School. It seems to be the location, the venue where most of our town events are taking place these days. So Saturday, October 26th, from 11 to 2. That's gonna be another great event, we've been doing a great job. That's actually a busy day as well, I think there's some other community events that day. And then always keep in mind, Sunday, November 13th, we have our 5K race in the morning, 9 o'clock in the morning. We already have a bunch of registrations, looking to break a record for that. And then I believe at either 11 or 12 o'clock is the Veterans Day Parade. It's the last parade, that's Belville's parade, it's the last parade that we do. We don't do many other parades in Belville, so that's the last one, so we'd like to have people participate. Lastly, just some news, today, right before this council meeting, we had the pleasure of swearing in a whole bunch of firemen, two deputy chiefs and a bunch of officers. We had a very special guest, nice to see guys retire and return. Deputy Chief Frank Papiani was here, and it was great to have that swearing in. Eight or seven months in the making, I think, manager. These guys have already been in the jobs for that long.
They actually graduated the academy a year ago.
So we got them in, we got them in, we got them sworn in, they're now official. Last week, I met with the AARP to discuss the pocket park on Division of Princeton Terrace Township Council. I think that might be two weeks. Township Council's going to have our first ABC hearing in nearly 12, 15, 17 years or so. So that's good, especially with some new developments happening, some of the new restaurants, some of the new bars. You see, we're unlike most, we don't have regular ABC meetings. I do own a liquor license, therefore I do not preside or take part in that. Deputy Mayor will be the chair, that's gonna be in two weeks, Kelly?
Yes.
That's gonna be in two weeks, I believe it's scheduled for 5 o'clock?
Correct.
And yeah, so that's gonna be interesting. And I believe there's two violations that the council, which serves as the ABC board, are gonna be dealing with. Manager mentioned hydrant flushing tomorrow through the 13th, which means I will get emails from people talking about dirty water, brown water, as the manager said, just keep running. Anchor program, I was suspicious about this program a couple of weeks ago, a couple of months ago. Anchor program is legit, it replaces the homestead rebate, it is real money. You will get a $1,500 check, a $1,000 check, or a $450 check if you're a tenant. Not just for homeowners, if you're a tenant within the income guideline. And you know what, from New Jersey standards, the income guidelines are reasonable. If you make $150,000 and less, you qualify. If you make $150,000 to $250,000, you still qualify. So that's something that's unique. I encourage all residents to make sure you apply for that. Next, Belville has a Starbucks. Belville has a much better Starbucks than Nutley, by the way. It's got a drive-through, it's got outdoor space. The Nutley guys, we saw them this coming Sunday at the Columbus Day Parade, were laughing about my comment about that, but hey, it is what it is, Belville's got a better Starbucks. Make sure you sign up for Nixol, brand new reverse 911 system. Track, according to the manager, is basically open, we just haven't formally busted a bottle of champagne over it, I guess. But that's gonna come in due time. It is open, you will not get kicked off unless you're there after dark, or you're riding a bike on it, or you're walking a dog on it, or you're doing everything else that I've seen people do on it. Then you will get kicked off, hopefully. Speaking of the municipal stadium complex, the pickleball court is under development, making good progress there. Great program, as always, out of our library. And lastly, chief, the community guarding Groundhog remains at large. Keeps giving your guys the slip. That's it for me. Next up, this is the first meeting of the month, so it's committee reports. If anybody hasn't discussed anything they want, we have ahoc committees here in this township. So any council member that wants to jump into a specific topic, or a specific panel, or an idea can do so. I always start with deputy mayor, deputy mayor, anything else to add?
No, not at the time.
No? Councilwoman Burke? Councilwoman Depena?
Nothing at the time.
We have here Councilman Cazarelli. Councilwoman DeBelle?
I'm good.
Okay. Approval of minutes?
Combined conference and regular meeting of January 11th and regular meeting of January 25th.
Make a motion.
Sergeant.
Make a motion made in second, clerk Colerole?
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Strumalberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melman?
Yes. I'll ask. Next, B.
Communications.
No, that was just one we did, we moved them both.
Move them both.
Is that correct, Kelly, is it 2021 and 2022?
Oh, no, yes, I'm sorry, that's--
It's eagle eye of the former teachers, Councilwoman Depena snagged that one.
It's 2022, I apologize.
It is an eagle eye. All right, we stand corrected, we approve minutes from 2022 and 2022. Communications.
A, request received from the residents of Division Avenue for permission to conduct a block party on Saturday, October 22nd, from 6 to 11. And B, request received from the residents of Acne Street for permission to conduct the block party on Saturday, October 29th, from 6 to 12 a.m.
So we're not ignoring these requests, these come in as communications, they get sent to the police department at 12 o'clock, and I know that's normal, but the police department will handle-- Anything with that. Okay, next item on the agenda is ordinances, ordinances for introduction.
Ordinance number one, an ordinance will amend revised general ordinances of the township of Belville, Chapter 8-2.2, parking prohibited at all times on certain streets.
Make a motion. Move for introduction.
Okay.
Make a motion made in second, move for introduction, clerk Colerole?
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Strumalberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melman?
Yes. Ordinance number two.
An ordinance will amend ordinance number 3634, creating permanent positions and adopting reclassification compensation plans.
Motion to introduce?
Second.
Make a motion made in second to introduce, clerk Colerole?
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Strumalberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melman?
Yes. Ordances for public hearing, second and final reading.
Ordinance number one for public hearing, an ordinance will amend revised general ordinances of the township of Belville, Chapter 8-16, handicap parking spaces.
Make a motion--
Make a motion for public hearing, second.
Make a motion made in second for public hearing, clerk Colerole?
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Strumalberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melman?
Yes, so we are open for public hearing on this ordinance, and this ordinance only. If you have a question about this ordinance, please stand up, state your name and address for the record.
Hearing not--
Okay. Make sure that microphone is on, sir.
Would you say it more, handicap placement with this, or what are we doing here?
Yes, so it says, usually it says deleting or adding, no, it says adding, editing.
Fine, I hope the chief's correct, because I believe you did pass an ordinance years ago. Every year, they check, and you have to reapply to see if they're legitimate on there.
That's what the chief said.
But some of these things are really getting out of hand. The other thing is, you go to Bulfield and other towns, they stripe the whole thing and blow on the street and all. My neighbor, Cross Street, I don't know if chief's aware of individuals, in the last two months, the police have been called three times because people park, and you gotta sign up, but it's at the tail end of the parking space. So people come, and again, because of the illegal parking on the street, we've got dozens of cars there, they just park in the guy's parking space. He comes home, he can't get, he just had a stroke, he's a legitimate handicap guy, but they can't see it, the street's on one. Go look at Bulfield, blue lines front and back, and other towns have the whole square blue, so it's very obvious to people. So maybe we can do that to stop these people from parking in these handicap spaces.
Thank you. Anybody else for this ordinance, this ordinance only? I'll take a motion to close, move for final adoption?
So moved.
Second.
Make a motion made in second to close, move for final adoption, clerk Colerole?
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Strumalberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melman?
Yes.
Ordinance number two for public hearing, an ordinance will amend, revise, and supplement the township code of the township of Belville, County of Essex State of New Jersey, Chapter 2, entitled Administration, Part 2, entitled Personnel, most notably, Section 12-19.6, entitled Supplemental Compensation Payments.
Make a motion to introduce, public hearing?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made in second to introduce for public hearing, clerk Colerole?
Councilmember Cazarelli. DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Strumalberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melman?
Yes. Anybody else, anybody for this ordinance, this ordinance only for public hearing? Mr. Frank Danton?
I have Section 2, this 19.6, so hopefully you folks are involved in this tonight. Can you tell me what you're doing with this ordinance?
Sure, this is a result of the attorney general's, I'm sorry, the state comptroller's audit report. We then hired a competent to review it, and the town attorney can speak more intelligently on it. Just a second.
Yes, sure. This is part of, as a result of the comptroller's report, there were some corrective actions that needed to be taken. Township hired a law firm to do those corrective actions. This is one of the corrective actions. This accomplishes one of the corrective actions that are necessary in order to comply with the comptroller's report regarding vacation and sick time.
Can we just say what that is, the corrective action?
Yes, so it limits to the amount to $15,000 for payouts of unused sick time. Which was not the ordinance previously.
Again, I fought to get that, when I was in office, the problem, the other four elected officials were government employees, and then we go, but why aren't we going to $12,000, which is the state cap? Which I tried to do, follow the state, the state has a $12,000 cap.
Because the comptroller's report, what the comptroller's report recommended is what we are doing, that's why.
So you tell me the comptroller recommended $15,000?
No, that's the law. That's the law, $15,000, not $12,000, $15,000.
There's a law-- That's why I said, are you aware that the state has a $12,000 cap?
I don't know what the state has, I'm talking about municipalities. We're a municipality, we're not the state, so we're, the state law is $15,000, which is why we are changing it in accordance with the comptroller's report.
All right, is that for all employees, or is there a time of hire stipulation?
Time of hire, May 21st, 2010, when the law changed. Where every employee hired after May 21st, 2010.
After 2010?
May 21st.
So the maximum they can get under any circumstances is 15--
Correct, before deduction, so--
So all employees are actually lowered.
Is there any other changes in that ordinance, in that section?
Yeah, that talks about, that's vacation, and then there's the sick time, which-- And it has to be done at retirement, so you can't take it mid-year, you can't take it every year. It has to be done at retirement, so that people don't take advantage of it. So it has to be done--
Only by retirement?
Yes.
And that's clear in the wording?
Absolutely.
That be clear, because that's--
It's in the new ordinance.
That's been abused in the past also.
Correct, and it wasn't, it was not in the old ordinance, it's in the new ordinance now. Again, as a result of the minor infractions Belville had in that report.
Okay, well, play the CD changes, if we enforce them.
Thank you. Anybody else for this ordinance, this ordinance only, Mr. Sheldon?
Good evening, Michael Sheldon, 47th Flight Street. I wanna thank you for clarifying, answering some of the questions I was going to ask, but I have a copy of the comptroller's report here, just for everyone's verification, council members, those in the audience, those watching, I want to read this section, what does the law say? And it says, "All employees hired after May 10th, May 2010, can receive more than $15,000 for their unused sick leave. Employees can only receive that $15,000 at retirement," which Mr. Martino acknowledged, "not when they resign, change jobs, or has an annual payout." Number three, employees can't carry over more than a year's worth of vacation time. And four, in addition, after 2007, certain senior local government employees cannot receive more than $15,000 for their unused sick leave. So I assume all of these matters now are up to speed and will be enforced from this point on. But the question I had is, obviously, the comptroller identified Belville among 60 other communities in New Jersey that were in violation of this law. So clearly, at least a few Belville employees got away with these violations. Will any effort be made now to recapture monies that were, in all reason, were illegally paid to these employees? So I'd like to know, what, if any effort is going to be made in order to help Belville taxpayers who were effectively victimized by law not being abided, what's gonna be done to recoup all of these losses? Could you please answer that question?
Mayor and council, to the best of my knowledge, the four years that I've been here, we have not paid anybody illegally or whatever, as far as, anything that was paid was based on contractual obligation, and we are not in violation of the comptroller's report.
Well, that's good to know that in the last few years, we're not in violation, but this pertains to every employee hired after May 2010, those priorer, or grandfathered in. But what about those who took advantage of these loopholes before you became town manager? Any effort going to be made to identify those who received monies from May 10th, from May 2010, until Mr. Iaccone assumed the role of town manager?
I would certainly defer to council, but I think that we would probably spend more money on legal fees.
So, yeah, and Mr. Martino makes a good point. We're not necessarily sure we were in any violation, that we illegally or incorrectly paid anybody out, it's just we didn't have the wording in our ordinance. Now we have the wording in our ordinance. The violation was about not having the wording in the ordinance, not about improperly paying someone.
That's right. It certainly seems, based on the wording of the comptroller's report, that his office did find illegal payments made to more than a handful of Belville employees.
Can you cite that in the--
I have an OPR question to his office to get the actual--
You just said that he said it, so you must know it--
In the report. In the report, well, I--
You clearly just said that the attorney general said that Belville paid people indirectly.
His report indicated that a number of communities, 60 communities that he identified--
Were in violation, which means we did not have the ordinance application. Where does it say that we paid somebody legally?
And his report, he said two things that Belville was in violation of, that they were paying more than $15,000. Belville had paid more than $15,000. He didn't indicate the number of employees on his website, but he said that Belville had two violations, paying more than $15,000, and paying it outside of retirement. So he clearly has your records--
Township attorney says it's not in the report, says you don't have the report, so there's no point--
I have it before you, but it's, the graphic, there's a graphic, and obviously when you try to print, graphic, graphics don't usually image. But on this, I'll post this link on my Facebook page and send it to you as well, but there is, on his, on his page where he posts this report, he has an interactive map for the 60 communities, and if you click on the Belville icon, he indicates that Belville paid more than $15,000 and paid it outside of retirement. But he doesn't indicate on that page the details. That's why I've sent an OPR in, asking him to give me all the nitty-gritty, fine-grained details.
Okay, I guess we'll hear about it next meeting.
Well, as soon as I do find it, but I assume you guys have to have had--
You've heard the manager say, and the town attorney say--
How did you get that information?
At this point, we're gonna wait for the information, man.
Soon it'll be forthcoming, it'll become public knowledge as soon as I get it.
Thanks. Anybody else for this ordinance, this ordinance only? Hearing not, I'll take a motion to close, move for final adoption? Motion made in second to close, move for final adoption, clerk Colerole?
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Strumalberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melman?
Yes. Orders number three?
Orders number three for public hearing, an ordinance commending Chapter 9, Section 2 of the car park ordinances of the township of Belville, entitled Parking Meetings.
Motion open to the public?
Second.
We have a motion made in second to open public hearing, clerk Colerole?
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Strumalberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melman?
Yes. Any question about this ordinance, this ordinance only? Mr. Frank Danton?
I'd like to know what you're doing.
Okay, so we have, you heard the discussion we had earlier about the brand-new meters. Those new meters now have credit card. We have an ordinance that states 25 cents per hour, therefore if you use a credit card, we get less money than that.
25 cents--
25 cents, 15 minutes, therefore we can't receive less money than that. So if you use a credit card, much like most government entities, that you have to pay the convenience fee or the surcharge for that, 13 cents extra.
And the other thing with the meters, when are we going to put them from a great locked door?
All right, that's nothing to do with this ordinance, you could talk about that during public comment. Anybody else for this ordinance, this ordinance only? Hearing not, I'll take a motion to close, move for final adoption? Clerk Colerole?
Councilmember Graziano.
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
I mean, Cazarelli, I'm sorry. Let's sort over, Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Strumalberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melman?
Yes. Okay, your ordinance on the table, so we're leaving. Next item on the agenda is public commenting, any motion to open public commenting? Any motion to open public commenting?
Uh huh.
We have a motion made in second to open public commenting. Clerk call roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Shubaloburk.
Yes.
Mayor Melon.
Yes. Okay, Mr. Frantantoni.
Phil Frantantoni, Mount Prospect Avenue. On Belville Avenue, up by Hendrix Field, here is a tree. That branch is hanging over.
Complained about many times.
I have contacted Joe, Joe DiFenzenzo on it. Twenty seven, I sent him a letter and I sent an email to his secretary. Here's a copy that I sent. Hopefully, they'll fix it because that is a disaster way now, and a tree, people on the tree, a couple of doors down from me, had a branch hanging like that, and in a storm, I mean, this tree was, it went down, damaged a lot of stuff. That, that's really bad.
I know. I talked to our county commissioner about it. All I could do is send emails. Thank you.
Well, I did email him three or four times, and hopefully, he'll do something. And as my husband mentioned, meters down by ShopRite, not at ShopRite before. Are they gonna go up over there? They're all parked on the, on the dirt, on the sidewalk all over, and there are no meters there at all. And will they be going up eventually?
Mr. Manager.
Yes. That is definitely part of the plan, and it's also part of the redevelopment, which is gonna be, that property locked. So there will be meters right up to the border.
All right, now, yellow curves, Clearup Field. When you go to the corner of Home Street and Union Avenue, it's not only the pedestrians that park their cars there, it's also the people that work for the Board of Ed. They park right up on the corner, and when you get to the corner, it's very hard to see. I mean, they're parking illegally. They don't belong parking there. So I hope that you could put a yellow curb there so they don't park there, because it's very bad. And another incident that happens, you have your crossing guards. You may have two or three at one corner, and they're all standing together instead of on the separate corners where they have to cross kids. They can't do that. Some of the intersections are very bad, and they should be on their respective corner to cross those kids and not stand in there talking and on their cell phones and everything else.
Is that during their shift, Phil?
Yeah, it's during shift.
They don't allow that while they're--
Yeah, by the middle school, and when there's children up on Union Avenue. And cars that are parked illegally all over. In fact, there's one on my block, been parked for two days across the sidewalk. The garage is up to the sidewalk, and he's been parked there, and you know where I'm talking about. It was just his old house.
Okay.
He can park wherever he wants. Nobody does nothing. He's there all the time. People have to walk around out in the street--
Just you last week at council meeting, did I say all the time? You called--
But everybody's, my husband has told chief about it and everything.
When you see the infraction call, I mean, all I could do is advise residents when they see an infraction call, please depart. Waiting two weeks to come to a council meeting?
It's there, it was there today. It was there yesterday, and it was there the day before.
That's rough.
This is all the time.
Okay.
So I hope something can be done about it.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment?
Lawrence Guines, City Watch Young Avenue. Sure. Thank you, guys, for letting me go before the heavy hitters get up. It's quick, I want a receipt, so excuse me. I'm glad the Town Manager are gonna have to sweep us out. They need to send some to Watch Young Avenue. That would be great, you know? And even with that for the chief here, we actually have cars literally parking in front of the fire hydrants, nighttime, daytime. They don't care. And we're on a dead end block, no one really comes down to enforce it, so chief's not actually--
That's not true.
Okay, I'm sorry, chief, but they are parking just in front of fire hydrants. Every fire hydrant has a car parked in front of it.
So as I said to Mrs. Frantantoni--
No, no, no. I'd rather come to a meeting and go with them. No, no, no. I understand what you're saying. I understand. I just wanted to bring it up, you know, it's no big--
As I just told, as I just told Ms. Frantantoni--
Yeah, yeah, I understand exactly what you, yeah.
Call, we can't do anything about it.
No, 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 I understand exactly what you're saying, and when you said you should bring it up, I already had it written down, so I'm gonna keep going with it.
I have that.
Um, I'm glad you like your Starbucks. It is really nice. There's only one problem, that right-handed turn coming on Franklin Ave. As we noted, people have already, not even taken a right turn, coming out, making a left turn. I don't think the right turn, I'm not a traffic guy, but I don't think the right turn sticks out enough, so they can't make that left turn. And it's really dangerous section, because that's actually a whole curve that's turning onto Franklin Ave. So maybe you guys wanna look into that or something. The livestream that you guys do, I wish there was someone that could actually, like, monitor it, because a lot of people do ask questions on there, and you can see the comments like, oh, why don't they look here, so we can get our questions answered and stuff like that. So I just thought I'd bring the one to bring it up, in case someone wants to look into that, or get something done with that, that you can actually monitor, so you can see if they actually have questions on the livestream. It's no use of having it on if you're not gonna address the residents' questions that can't get here.
Well, I think it's more for residents that wanna be informed what's going on, if they have any permanent issues, they can write an email, they can call, they can come to a council meeting.
Well, some things are going live, and you guys are talking--
Live answering, live answering while I'm trying to conduct the meeting is something that seems a little difficult.
Yeah, no, I understand. I just wanted to bring it up and see if that was any type of option that you could go through or something like that.
May, mayor?
Sure, let me, let's finish, and then we'll--
No, no, that's good, go ahead.
No, can I finish?
Yep.
No, no, I'm done, I'm done.
Maybe if it, people hearing us or where the math gets out, maybe they could submit their questions beforehand, and we can answer them. We do a lot of that.
I don't, I don't know if we noticed that way.
Kelly, don't we need notice?
Oh, you don't?
Call in. Call in, call in, pretend. They can call in while they're watching the meeting. Absolutely. And they could talk in public.
But a lot of them, like, I, even if I had a question, I don't know which number to call, you know? Who am I calling?
It's on the website.
It's posted.
On the website?
Said, I did. It took me notice, it's on, I mean--
It took me notice.
Yeah, I mean, we, people do have to take a little bit of an effort to actually try--
Yeah, you can't, I, I, I've looked on the website, I've never noticed it, so maybe we could make it a little, like, highlight it a little bit or something, so they actually know, like, this is the number you can call, you know?
I mean, if they're able to get onto a livestream, they should be able to find a phone number or an email.
I, I look for the, I, I look for the phone number during a live meeting, and it's not the easiest thing to find.
Yeah, it's right on the agenda.
It's on the agenda.
Okay, all right.
We can actually put it on, we can put it on--
On the thing, they have to do it.
Yes.
It's literally on page one of the agenda, though.
We'll put Anthony's phone.
Thank you.
We're gonna give you Anthony's cellphone number.
Thank you, guys, that was a good one, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um--
Kelly, we're gonna have to--
I'll--
No, we're gonna have to call that number right now.
No, no, no. We're trying to make it easier for them.
Anybody else for public comment? Mr. Frantantoni.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, you asked Mr. Sheldon if he had an approval of illegal payments. Well, he does, but I have, and I got it from the Town Manager. I opened it when you guys, council people, passed a $1.9 million bond ordinance. When I asked for the details, I got the results from there. You paid illegal payments. Part of that 1.9 was another illegal thing, about $450,000 under a line item called incentives, which, I'll be nice about it, I, maybe bribes would be more appropriate for that. Those were all illegal payments in the bond ordinance that you people voted on, that $1.9 million. There was another line for vacation payments. Vacation payments is not carried over. When I was drawn, I sent all employees the state statute, and I said, "No vacations are carried over, with one exception. If you wanna carry for one year, you have to send me a letter saying what week you wanna take, when you're gonna use it, and a reason for that. Other than that, it's illegal to carry over and pay." You guys in that $1.9 million ordinance that you guys voted for paid hundreds of thousands of dollars in illegal vacation, uh, payments. So if you wanted, you couldn't answer, Mr. Sheldon, I asked you to go back and look at what you approved and paid out in that $1.9 million of our tax dollars to illegal vacation and incentive payments that you paid out that were illegal. The other one, not you, Mr. Mayor, and then Mr. Graziano and DePena, but the other four, or minus Mr. Perry, I hope you're proud of what you did when you got rid of school number one. You, Mr. Rebel, Mr. Cosarelli, Ms. Burke, all right? First of all, about the Board of Education, I grew up at the time, the Board of Ed, for five years, could not answer me, provide a deed. Nobody could find a deed for school one, because they're all looking for 190 Corlins Street. I was on jury duty, they adjourned us 11 o'clock, I spent the rest of the day down there, and I found it. The reason I found all those deeds, because it was under 81 Stevens Street. But there was four deeds. That property had four deeds. The one on the northwest corner, that deed actually, the property goes across Corlins Street. So now the Board of Ed, that was all illegal. Quick Check wants to come in, they have smart attorneys, and they found out that all that stuff, that you guys approved, and you guys did, you know, always illegal. So what, you know, nobody ever gets punished for doing these stupid illegal things, and you formed, voted for that. Number one, I, I don't understand it. I don't understand it. You, Mr. Rebel, you have family in the school system, you should've known--
Frantantoni, just keep your comments to the chair.
Well, it's, it's, addressing one, you weren't involved at that time. I don't know if you made any difference, but it, it, it's a shame that nobody pays attention to what they're doing, and we, the taxpayers, suffer. So now I've been fouled for, like, 10 years or more, and, you know, Quick Check court and all that. But when, are we going to start paying attention to what you guys are voting on? You don't know what the hell you're doing, really, most of the time. And we, the taxpayers, are paying big time for it. The other thing is, last meeting, once again, you approved, and again, through the chair, you wanted me to go through the chair, but Mr. Rebel voted no on the Cosarelli, you know, funeral home thing, which is not an area in need of redevelopment. But Matthew Boxer, the State Controller, in 2010, did a big article about the pitfalls and problems of these pilot agreements and all. Once, one of the articles, one of the sentences in there, that most of them, there's actually no reason to declare an area blighted or in need of redevelopment. That Cosarelli Funeral Home is a perfect example of what the State Controller put in there. There's no reason. Now, like, all these things are highlighted, these are all problems, everyone that you're committing, every one of these problems you're committing. These developers are overstating their expenses, they're combing the expenses from one project to another--
You need to wrap up.
--to make it look like their expenses are high, and then you guys are giving them, Matthew Boxer, State Controller, 2010. If any of you got the courage to look at that and see how you, how he says, "How's bad these pilots and these tax abatements and this redevelopment things are doing?"
Thank you, Mr. Frantantoni.
So wake up, and I hope you stop that--
Thank you.
--that, that need of redevelopment of a beautiful historic home.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening, I'm starting my time clock, my clock now, because I just clocked Mr. Frantantoni, and he's shorting my 35th second.
Not true.
Yes, it is. I'm clocking this. My clock is wrong or your clock is wrong.
You're running 10 minutes, you're running 10 seconds.
And my time starts not from the seat, it's time to get here.
Sorry to speak.
Because I'm the back here, I've already clocked myself. It says, "I have five minutes." Not four minutes and 20 seconds, as you have been doing--
Four minutes and 35 seconds.
You have been doing that in the last several meetings. Go back on your own videos, and I've been shorted. And I, you know, the course of years, you have shorted me hours, probably. At the last town meetings, you gave me four minutes and 20 seconds. And that, and then you were telling me I can't speak anymore. Well, you're out of order, number one.
All right, let's move on.
I'm clocking myself, I don't need you to clock it, you better check your clock. Something's not ticking right there. Okay, uh, the bill list, why isn't the bill list up here? The bill list should be on the town, for us public to review it. And the manager is responsible for that, because Township Ordinance says, our state statute says, "The manager shall oversee all departments. If the manager doesn't give it to the employees, the employees can't do their job." So Mr. Manager, state statute, check it out, because I did. And it says, "You shall oversee--
Mr. Roberts rules of order says you address the chair. Did you wanna cite laws?
Okay. One more three, one more three. Kurt Penny. I'm glad somebody finally listened to me after about two years of complaining about the illegal parking. And I'll tell you what, it's not only illegal parking, I have already witnessed people putting cones in front of their house for parking. So that's only the beginning. Got 319, 318 to go. All right, number four. When is resolution, when I sit down, just answer Resolution Number Five as to what they are doing. And going back to your comments about street cleaning and calling in for tickets, well, I called in, as a matter of fact, I sent the manager an email, I called into the police department, left the message for street cleaning. Street cleaning is 7:30 to 11:30. I called in at 9:30, they say the car is still there, no tickets. The car finally left, so these cars sit around for hours, and they play Russian roulette whether we're gonna get a ticket or not. So why are you telling us to call in when we do call in and you don't ticket them?
Chief is right there, I'm sure, I'm sure he noted your complaint about his department.
Yeah, well, it's in, it's recorded. And answer Number Five for me, because you, I notice every time I sit down, you never finish answering me, so answer Number Five.
I usually try to answer you, and you always interrupt me, so that's 371, and four, you're interrupting me now.
You're constantly interrupting me. You're just so rude and arrogant that you constantly interrupt people. That's because of your hatefulness towards certain people here.
Anybody else for public comment?
Uh, Number Five, you didn't answer yet.
I answered it, you were too busy complaining about it.
I still got time.
Mr. Sheldon.
I got time.
Mr. Sheldon.
Uh, and Mr. Attorney, he's violating my rights.
You, you, you sat down, you were done.
Yeah.
Mr. Sheldon. I gave you the answer six times, you were too busy talking over me.
Good evening, Michael Sheldon, once again. Mr. Melon, as I pointed out publicly, by looking at old previous videos, the three people, people in particular, Mr. Frantantoni, Mr. Rose, and myself, you start the clock when you call upon us, not when we start speaking. We're supposed to have five minutes before this microphone.
The clock goes off early, and then I ask people, like I did to everybody else, to please wrap up.
From this point on, I will be keeping my own clock as well.
You're already 35 seconds in.
No, I'm, 10 seconds in, I'm sorry. You mentioned during the conference section that you're making an effort to limit ATV activity on our streets. Interestingly enough, on my way to the council meeting tonight, at 5:45 PM, there was an entire gang of ATVs moving southbound on Washington Avenue. I don't know if anyone else here saw them. You did, who saw them? You heard them. Right.
I heard, it sounded like a drag strip.
I literally discussed it in my mayor's report.
Well, the, the lead guy, these were pretty large three-wheel vehicles as well, the lead guy was doing wheelies down most of Washington Avenue. I happen to have a video camera in my car, I caught all of it, and with our chief here, if he would be interested, I will send him the, the video. I also assume since they went, but most significantly, let me point this out, when they got to Rutgers and Washington Avenue, even though there was a red light, they bullied their way through the intersection, almost causing an accident with a, a car that was making a turn off of Rutgers Street, southbound onto Washington. So you had clearly this group engaged in reckless behavior. And if the chief wants the video, if he doesn't have the video already in place on Washington Avenue, I will supply this to him. I've already, over the last few years, I've given the Belville Police Department lots of video. Most recently, almost in front of my house, I found on a Sunday morning four large bricks, which were either cocaine or fentanyl. Now, some of the members of the police department told me that, well, he did some testing, it may have been sugar, but it's hard to believe since every day for the next five days, detectives.
Can I just stop you for one, I mean, it's kind of disparaging to the township for you to go on social media and come here and say you found cocaine when police labs didn't indicate there was cocaine or fentanyl.
Well, it's, it's interesting, then, a lot, a lot of interest, a lot of interest on the part of, of, of four detectives to, to visit my house almost every day for the next several days, asking me for any available video. They went to all of the neighbors, they went down Floyd Street, Malone, Tapan, Division, they told me, looking for any homeowners with other video. A hell of a lot of interest in powdered sugar, right? But let, let that be what it may, what it may. The, if I understood Ms. Kavanaugh, she kind of whispered that the bills list now are being included in the online agenda packets? So that's, that's, that's now, all right, I'm glad, I'm glad that's, that's happened at long last. If you're going to make the effort to enforce parking rules, you should use the township website to periodically remind residents of the state laws, that you can't park within 50 feet of a stop sign, you can't park within 25 feet of a crosswalk or intersection, and you can't park within 10 feet of a fire hydrant. 10 feet, I believe. But.
I, I, Michael, 10.
It's 10 feet. If you, if we were to drive, go around tonight, I'd take you up on this challenge, I bet you would find easily 100 violations of these three laws as, as I speak right now.
Mr. Sheldon, you did. I don't know why you were here at the beginning of the meeting when I sat here and said to you that I've driven the chief around to see the yellow curb. You're telling us stuff that we already discussed at this very meeting.
You know, I know, why, why aren't these laws enforced?
And the chief's getting beat up today, and I'm not sure he deserves it all, but it seems like every single person's picking on his department today.
I'm not trying to beat him up. It's just that there's, there's, for some reason, a blind eye is being turned to all of these parking violations, which are endangering public safety.
It was literally my discussion item today at this meeting.
Right, well, you have a key position here. You need to use your collective power.
I just did today, about an hour ago.
To make sure that all of these parking rules are enforced. And I, I will speculate here, the reason why this isn't done is because if this town hall were to suddenly start enforcing these parking rules, there would be such an overwhelming backlash, there would be hundreds of residents screaming at you collectively, where in the hell do we park? If we can't park within, you know, never mind 50 feet.
I do need you to wrap up, Mr. Sheldon.
But this, this is outrageous, because you, the, the lap, the fact that these parking rules are not being enforced endangers those of us who are.
I have no enforcement power, this governing body has no enforcement power, the town manager doesn't have enforcement power, but we did discuss it. I said during my discussion to, that I've mentioned this before to the chief, the chief is well aware of it. I mean, you could use your time to talk about it, that's fine, but your time is up, and now I do have to ask you to wrap up.
From this point on, every speaker gets five minutes.
Wonderful.
Before this microphone, not, not trans.
Anybody else who's near past your five minutes?
He's shorted.
You're back.
Bill Millen, 16 Hubble Street, I have one question here. Are any of our council members taking municipal health benefits?
Yes.
Who are they?
I am.
I am.
I think every single person up here is.
No.
No?
You don't take eyeglasses or dental wear?
Yes.
Oh.
Yeah, we all, we all get some.
No, excellent. True.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening, call, Flashway 33 Main Street. At the last meeting, I spoke to the attorney, or, excuse me, to the manager in regards to the mess on Route, Main Street, Route 21. Have you heard any kind of feedback yet on that?
Yes, uh, myself, the manager, I believe Council Cosarelli, maybe, no, we're on a conference call with our friend Meredith, and it was brought up to her again during that conference call by myself and the manager.
Right, and what's my?
She's gonna notify me, that's supposed to be the response we got.
Okay, that's number one. Number two, unfortunately, it does sound like the police department is getting beat up tonight, and that's wrong, because they're the ones that are on the front line, they're the ones that are putting their lives on the line for all of us. So I applaud the police and the chief and everyone who protects us. So that's, you know, number two.
That could come up.
You're welcome. Number three, I have such a bone to pick with whoever is responsible for putting.
Anthony, time out.
Let me finish, because I have a feeling I'm gonna be yelling at somebody about the lovely yard sales this past weekend. I understand that they were deferred because of the rain. That is.